I'd like to welcome the community as well as the council members. Today is June 20, 2017. I would like to call the Altadena Town Council meeting to order. It's 7:12. I'd like to apologize to the community. We had some setup to do and we ran a little bit late. Okay, the Pledge of Allegiance, Councilmember Mathen, please.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Just for the council, when you speak, please speak into the mic. I will be calling your name when it's your turn to speak. That's been a request from the media. All right, roll call, Recording Secretary, Councilmember Matthews.
Good evening, everyone. Council, please acknowledge your presence when your name is called. Ann Chone.
Present.
Dean Cooper.
Absent.
Nester Delatory.
Present.
Akori Zimi.
Present.
Damon Hobbie.
Here.
Ann Langson.
Here.
Jennifer Lee.
Here.
Billy Malone.
Present.
Diane Marcusson.
Here.
Judy Matthews, yes, I'm present. Brent Musson.
Present on the counter floor.
Justin Robertson.
Here.
Gloria Sangika.
Here.
Patricia Sutherland.
Here.
Sylvia Vega.
Present.
John White.
Present.
We have one absence and we have a form at 15.
Thank you so much. Item number 1.3, approval of June 20, 2017, meeting agenda. That will be Vice Chairman, Councilmember Hobbde.
Yes, councilmembers, good evening. The agenda that you have before you was set by the Executive Committee. Has everybody had a chance to look that over? I see everybody has. Is there any changes that anyone wants to make? I know, Akori, you wanted to make an addition to the agenda.
That'll be correct. That will be item number 4.4 and that will be, does anyone have that? That will be a presentation from the Department of Public Works. And it'll be presented by Adele. I can't spell the name.
Viskar.
Any other changes? Anybody?
I've added Census Track report, so it'll be 7.4 for Census Track 4613.
7.4 added. Anybody else? With that in mind, with the amendments that have been made to the agenda for June 20 of 2017, I move that the amended agenda for June 20 of 2017 be approved as amended.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposing? Any abstentions? Thank you, Vice Chair. Okay, again, we appreciate the community coming forth to support the town council. I would like to remind the community that the community standard district, CSD, will be, is on the agenda next Tuesday, June 27, 2017. The Board of Supervisors will be looking at it, possibly taking an action on the CSD. So, again, that will be downtown, June 27, 2017, at 9 o'clock in the morning. In the interest of time, I will just move along the agenda to the next 2.2. The Chair does not have a report to share at this time, other than the information that I've shared regarding the CSD. So, Vice Chairman, Damon Hobbde.
Yes, good evening to the community. Good evening, councilmembers. The agenda has already been set. However, I wanted everybody to know that the Executive Committee meets every second Tuesday of the month. The Executive Committee consists of myself, Damon Hobbde, Mr. Akori Zimi, Patricia Sutherland, Billy Malone, and Judy Matthews. And if you have something that you'd like to put on the agenda, please contact us on the Monday before the second Tuesday of the month, so that that issue can be talked about and you can be put on the agenda. Also, there are comment cards in the back. If anybody has a comment they'd like to make with respect to a special presentation or with respect at the end of the meeting, please fill out a comment card, give it to one of the councilmembers, and you will have an opportunity to speak at the end of the ATC meeting. Lastly, I've never done this before, but I'd like you and to encourage you. I thank you guys for coming and we see the same faces all the time. But for next month, if you would be willing to go next door to your next-door neighbor or across the street to a friend's house or someone that you've wanted to talk to and you just haven't reached out to them, and bring them to the council meeting. We're only as effective as the community that we serve. And so although we see the same faces, we like to see new faces, new people that know about the town council, are interested in Altadena and the betterment of Altadena. So make a concerted effort for next month, even if you're doing a presentation, to tell someone or bring a friend to the Altadena Town Council meeting. Thanks.
Thank you so much, Vice Chair. Recording Secretary, this will be item number 2.3 and that will be Councilmember Judy Matthews.
Thank you, Chairman. Council, you were provided the draft minutes of May 16, 2017, with a response date of Monday, June 19, 2017, for any comments. I received a comment from Justin Robinson to correct Ann, A-N-N, to A-N-N-E, under 5.1.1, which was previously noted and corrected. Ann Chrome suggested the following changes, which were acknowledged and the items were changed for clarity only where appropriate after reviewing notes and verifying information. Item number 5.1 in part reads, "Community and without being so restrictive as to keep the business from succeeding." Public comments, Ms. Lopez, comment to include, "First tenant to sign lease." Item number 5.1.2 in part reads, "CSD revisions but be included in the final presentation of the revisions." Item number 5.1.3 in part reads, "Completely removed and re-engineered." Item number 5.2 in part reads, "Town council two separate words." Item number 8 in part reads, "That is the last weekend and has both a Saturday and Sunday." Suggested changed, suggested changes that are correct and not changed, item number 2.4 and the year 2019 under 5.1.3. Changes previously noted and made by Recording Secretary. Item numbers 5.1.1, public comment, Helen Oberstree, Altadena Community Plan. 7.2, Strip Mall at Altadena Drive and Lincoln Avenue. And 7.3, year 2011, and states in part, hearings are. Are there any other corrections or amendments to the minutes? Okay, not hearing none. I move that the May 16 meeting minutes are accepted as amended.
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion and properly seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposing? Anyone abstaining?
Abstain.
Item 2.4, Treasury Report, Councilmember Sutherland.
Okay, good evening, everybody. The bank balance as of the end of April, beginning of May, is $2,330 and 6 cents. Changes from the previous month are due to donations from the May meeting, the fees that the candidates paid when they applied to run for office, and donations for the Triangle Park. And the checks that cleared, most of it was the check that we wrote for the Triangle Park donation. Are there any questions from the council?
What's the amount that went to the Triangle Park donation that came out of the Treasury? May I ask?
There is another check that has to be deposited, so I don't have the final answer. So it'll be probably in the range of about $200, maybe, around there.
Thank you.
I'll know after, next month. And just as a reminder, we live off of donations. We are not subsidized by anybody, so I'm going to pass our donations can around. And you better put something in it, since you're laughing there.
(laughing).
Smarty. Okay, I'm gonna send it your way there, Damon.
Yeah, I got it. There you go.
And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Moving on to the item number 2.5, and that will be Correspondent Secretary's Report, Councilmember Malone.
Hi. I first want to keep this brief to a full agenda this evening. A couple of things I want to bring up is, it is the end of the year, there are some seats changing hands, so please, and this goes out to everybody, if you have your contact forms, who'd contact, check on the website next month. Make sure that your Census Track rep hasn't changed, and if they have, make sure you update your contacts. And that goes out to the new people coming up. Please give me your contact information, so we can have your, how you can be reached, via email, via phone number, and pictures and new bios that can be in the updates for your website. And any existing members, if you want to update any of your information, please get it to me soon, it's that time of year. The other thing I want to make a note of, and it will be talked about a little bit later, from the sheriffs, but they are having their 90th anniversary open house on Saturday, August 19, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. I'd encourage everyone to go. I have been, it's a lot of fun. Take the family, take the kids. It's lots of hot dogs, if I remember correctly. You'll hear more about that later.
You're done? Public Safety, Officer Mike Yoah is not here tonight. Okay, Altadena Sheriff's Station, Lieutenant Yolanda Clay.
Good evening, everyone, chair, council. I'm gonna go over the, I'm here on behalf of Captain Stuckey, who couldn't be here tonight, as well as Lieutenant Mike Octave, who normally does the crime stats, so I'm gonna fill in for him. For May of 2017, our violent crimes year-to-date are down 41 percent, and that has to do with the robberies and aggravated assaults being down. For robberies, that's 47 percent, and for the assaults, that's a decrease of 23 percent. Where we still struggle, or with the property crimes, that continues to be up. Right now, it's at 24 percent. And that has to do with thefts, particularly thefts from vehicles, so at the hiking trails and unfortunately just on your average block. And then, we've had an increase in vehicle thefts for May. We're looking good for April, but I'll tell you that next month. So I just want to remind people to remove their belongings, your computers, your purses from your vehicles. Please lock your cars. And then, I think we've had a good decrease, because we continually ask people to report things that are suspicious, and please continue to do so. That helps with us. I just want to make a quick note, and Census Track 4603.2, it kinda had a spike, nothing to be alarmed at, but it had to do with the burglaries, but it's from other structures, so like garages. But nothing really significant, but if you look at the report we sent you, it looked like it went up. But that's pretty much that.
I have a question for you. This is summer, school is out. There will be the concert series at the park. If maybe you are...
Actually, I was gonna do the community part next.
Okay.
There's several events that are gonna happen in the area. This past Saturday, not sure if any of you were able to come out to our annual car show, but we had a good time. That was at Farnsworth Park, and it was sponsored by Toyota Pasadena. A lot of people participated in it, and when we have it next year, it'll be our sixth annual, so we'll make sure to remind you guys. But beginning Saturday, July 8 through September 9, that's excluding Labor Day weekend, our sheriff's support group is kicking off their annual summer concerts in the park, and that's held at Farnsworth Park. It's free, it begins at 7:00 p.m. Everyone's invited to attend that. Tuesday, August 1, at 6:00 p.m., it's National Night Out, and that's a way for you to come out and meet your local first responders, our department, LA County Fire, CHP, I think I, Superior Town Council will be there, but it's really fun. The kids had a blast last year, so that's August 1, 6:00 p.m. And then, like Mr. Malone mentioned, we're gonna celebrate our 90th year as Altadena Sheriff's Station, and that's Saturday, August 19. We'll start it at 10:00 a.m., and at 11:00 a.m. we'll start the short program. I've left flyers in the back for all three of those events. Feel free to take 'em, pass 'em off to your neighbors, or just spread the word.
Okay, thank you so much. Any questions?
Sure.
Any question from council?
I have a question.
Okay.
You said that there were some activity in 4603.02, and you said other structures. What did you mean?
Okay, well, when we report burglaries, typically people will automatically think a burglary at a home, but just because of how we clarify things, we'll document it as burglary other, meaning a garage. It's still a four-sided structure, which constitutes a burglary, but it's a garage. I didn't want people to think, oh, we're having residential burglaries, but it could be to a garage.
Oh, I see.
Okay.
Okay.
All righty.
Any further questions from council? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, CERT.
Hello.
Paige.
Yes, thank you very much, council. We have a community emergency response team meetings here in this building, the second Wednesday of every month, from 5:30 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. July 12 is our next meeting. The community emergency response team is a course that's put on by several different agencies, LA County Fire, Sheriff's Department, many cities, and the training covers fire extinguishers, patient movement, triage, searching, using radio, basically taking care of yourself in the event of a big disaster, because our emergency services will be overwhelmed if, here in Los Angeles, very populated area. So we are teaching people to take care of themselves, take care of their neighbors, take care of their blocks. And the trainings that we have here at the community center are hosted by our sheriff's station. We're basically refreshers of that 24 hours of training by CERT. I have all my contact information in the back, if you need to get in touch with me. Any questions?
Any questions from council? Okay, Councilwoman Marcusson.
I just had a question. It's a refresher course, but can people come that have not yet been through the CERT training?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Does anybody?
It's open to the public. Like I said, on the July 12, we're doing splinting and bleeding and some disaster psychology. Our August 9 meeting, Rubio Canyon Water Company is coming to speak about what's gonna happen, what potentially could happen after a big earthquake, you know, the boil water notice and that kind of stuff. So I'm gonna try and put that out on all our social media platforms and invite members of the public, because everyone is invited.
That's great, thank you.
Yes.
Any further questions from council? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Map your neighborhood, and that will be, I believe, Karen Gibson.
Good evening, council, and our esteemed fellow citizens here. I'm here with a happy heart tonight, and that's because in the last month or so, we've gotten my neighborhood mapped, under the Map Your Neighborhood program. I bet you thought that I'd already done that, didn't you? Well, not quite yet. Anyway, Map Your Neighborhood, for the benefit of folks who don't know, is a program that comes out of Washington State, and it bridges that gap between personal and household preparedness and community emergency response training. It's that, it's the next step up into what can we do together to be our own self-helping first responders when the first responders are overwhelmed. So, it's a great piece, and it is a very hyper-local preparedness program. And the way that I, we have a training set up, July 19. These flyers are on the piano. I'm so grateful to the council for putting this up on the website, on the second screen. Thank you so much. But pick one up there, and you can also call this number or respond to this email for further information. But the reason why I specifically wanted to come tonight was to just emphasize how easy this is. And the way it started for my neighborhood was with a potluck supper. Who doesn't love a potluck supper, right? Wouldn't your neighborhood love one of those? So we invited our neighborhood watch group, that's our sort of loose organization, there are about six streets involved, and we got together. And at that very gathering, we had our own town council members, Justin Robertson and Pat Sutherland. Thank you, my sincere appreciation for your coming and visiting with us for a while. But at that very meeting, neighbors gathered by the street that they live on and set a Map Your Neighborhood meeting. We talked about it a little bit as a big group, and then we went off in our corners and set meetings. And of the six streets, there were three that were scheduled, right then and there. That was great. And two of them took place, took place the very next week? That's how eager people are to get rolling with this and to, to make a plan. Everybody just comes away with a big sigh of relief, knowing that at least we've, we've met, we've talked, we've, we've made a plan. So we did that. And the meeting that I went to, and I didn't host it, but I facilitated, simple, simple, simple. There are three tent poles of the Map Your Neighborhood program. One is the DVD, that's very straightforward and basically runs your meeting for you, so you don't have to know anything about it. The other is the shingle that everybody takes home with them, that has all the data on it that you need, and steps to go through before and during the disaster. And the third tent pole is the magic that happens when people get together and look in each other's eyes and make a plan. So I hope that can happen for you, too. And I heard quotes from people who hosted the meetings, like, gee, I've lived here six years and I met people I never knew before. That's important. We made a plan for the wife of one of my neighbors who's blind. I think that set her husband's mind quite a bit at ease. We have children that need to be looked after when parents are gone, so in any case, your neighborhoods are like that, too. And so I hope that you'll reach out and contact us and make an effort to bring Map Your Neighborhood to your neighborhood. Thank you, everyone.
Question from Councilmember Marcusson.
Hello there, of course.
Hi. You know, I'm, I just wanted to take a minute, Karen, because you did such a great job of explaining, if there's a major event, nobody's coming to help us, right? And so that's really what the, what the premise of this is. So you, for example, designate somebody to go turn off the gas, everybody's houses, go around and check and see if the gas needs to be turned off, right? What you can do, you will do, you know where the people are that need extra help. So I just wanted, this is not just a list who you are and everything, there's, the purpose behind it really is that no one is coming to help us in a major disaster if all we have is broken houses, right? I mean, the, the first responders are gonna be going to, or not be able to get through.
Not that they don't want to.
Right.
Yeah, certainly. And if I could add.
Yeah, sure.
There's that golden hour after the disaster, where if you, if you are able to unblock airways and able to stem severe bleeding and able to deal with shock, we'll save lives. We'll just save lives, and we'll reduce the severity of property damage if we stop gas leaks by turning it off.
Right. Put out small fires.
Putting out fires when they're still small.
Right.
And we all collect our fire extinguishers and go deal with it while they're little. So we would hate to lose our whole town because of few houses.
Right. And in the end, on this, what you end up knowing is, who has shovels, who has?
That's right.
Like the basic stuff, so that you can, your plan really is, okay, we're all gonna get together and everybody work together.
Right.
Anyway, I don't, I don't want to take up any more time, but it's just, it's important to understand kind of why we need to do this.
And that it's in writing and everybody takes it home with them is important, so that you don't have to remember anything.
Right.
It's just, get the shingle.
Right.
So, there you go.
Thank you, thanks.
Thanks for that elucidation.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item number 3.5, and that will be county fire, and I'm not sure if any, Mark Wellin, Battalion Chief, number four. Okay, not here. Okay, special presentations, and let's start with the Office of Marijuana Management, and that will be, let's see, where are we? Okay, Joseph Nikita.
Yes. A lot of letters in that name, so appreciate that. So I am Joe Nikita with the Office of Cannabis Management. We are a division of the county CEO. So thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you, council, for having us today. We have 15 minutes or so allotted, I think, so we're gonna talk really fast and get through our presentation and then take any questions from the council. So I'm here with Max Thielander. Max is gonna start.
Can you clear the mic, please?
Yes. Max is gonna start the presentation today. Yeah, we were formerly, we're the office formerly known as Marijuana Management, now we're Office of Cannabis Management. We've updated our name. So while Max is, while Max is talking, I'm gonna hand out a comment form, and the reason I'm doing that is because we're gonna go over this in the presentation, but we will have community meetings to get on cannabis regulations in LA County. People are busy, you might not be able to make a community meeting. If you have a comment today, give it to us, we'll take it, we'll roll it into our report back up to the board. Every comment will be given to the Board of Supervisors in a report. So you can do that today, you can still come to a meeting, giving us a comment today doesn't limit that either. We've added something to the piano, I hope that's okay. It's actually a signup for our listserv. So as we develop content, or we have meetings, or we issue calendars, we blast that out to our listserv. So if somebody is interested in getting updates from us on anything that we're up to, please put your name on that, on the signup sheet, and in fact, we'll probably hand some of those out as well as we do that. Okay, so I'll turn it over to Max to start us off.
Good evening, everyone. My name, Max Thielander, I'm with the Office of Cannabis Management. Previously, I was with Department of Regional Planning, and I see a few familiar faces. I was briefly involved with the Altadena CSD, but I am now at Cannabis Management. Our unit was formed late last year in anticipation of Proposition 64 and the recreational legalization of cannabis. So I'm going to speak briefly about the state laws governing both medical and recreational cannabis, and then the personal cultivation regulations. So you're probably aware that cannabis has been around in California for some time in medical form, going back to 1996, when the voters first approved Proposition 215, the Compassionate Use Act. Medical cannabis has been legal in California. Medical cannabis has been legal in California. However, for about 20 years after that, the industry was largely unregulated. There were very few standards in place as far as the product safety, how the businesses operate, where they can operate, who can operate them and so on. What regulation there was, was really done at the local level and as a result, there were a lot of areas that were entirely unregulated and the ones that were regulated were sort of a patchwork. That changed in 2015 and 2016 when the state legislature adopted three bills, which are together known as the Medical Cannabis Regulation and Safety Act, or MACURSA. And for the first time, this began to regulate for medical cannabis, all these different areas I just mentioned. For recreational cannabis, there was a voter-initiated ballot initiative on the ballot last November, Proposition 64. It was approved by a majority of voters in the state and that legalized for the first time possession, cultivation and use of cannabis by adults ages 21 and over for non-medical or recreational purposes. It's not an unlimited quantity that adults can possess. It is a maximum of one ounce of dried cannabis and eight grams of concentrated cannabis. And if you're wondering what these two things are, Joe will speak to that in a moment. And what this does for recreational cannabis is similar to what MACURSA does for medical, basically putting in place standards at the state level for the product safety, how the businesses can operate and so on. Now, there is still a major caveat to all this, which is federal law. You're probably very well aware that it is still legal under federal law. It's classified as a Schedule I Controlled Substance, along with various other serious drugs such as heroin and LSD. And that has major implications for anyone who's involved in the industry. They face potential criminal liability, even if they are fully compliant with state and local regulations. And for us as regulators, that creates some challenges as well. One of the biggest of which is banking. Because it is federally illegal and banks are usually federally insured, most of them don't want anything to do with the industry at this time. And so as a result of that, most of the business takes place in the form of cash and that creates various challenges, logistical challenges for business owners who are just trying to pay their employees, pay their rent, pay their taxes and so on, as well as increased opportunities for crime and public safety concerns. It's not that it is not banked at all. We call it underbanked. So there are some banks out there that are willing to wade into these somewhat risky waters, but they're few and far between at the moment. So I'm going to speak briefly about personal cannabis cultivation now. Personal cannabis cultivation is now legal for adults for both medical and non-medical purposes. However, as with the possession, the quantity is not unlimited. It's limited to six plants per residence and it's important to note that it's not per resident, but per residents or per dwelling unit. Cities and counties are permitted under the state law to adapt, adopt reasonable regulations on personal cultivation, which means that they can ban outdoor personal cultivation, but they cannot ban indoor. They cannot ban all personal cultivation, even if they wish to do so. And the rules for medical and non-medical personal cultivation and medical and non-medical cannabis generally are slightly different. There's a lot of work going on now at the state level to try to reconcile these two frameworks, except where there is a deliberate reason for them to be different. So that's kind of going on behind the scenes right now. And that does extend to the personal use as well, but most people probably won't be concerned with that. So some of the issues that we are looking at with personal cultivation, first and foremost, access and exposure to children. I think anyone who is a parent understands the importance of this, even if a parent is a cannabis user themselves, that probably is still on their mind. Odors are another major concern. Visibility and exposure for all ages and general possibilities to trigger disagreements among neighbors. And so with these issues in mind, LA County does now have an ordinance, a local land use ordinance for the unincorporated areas that regulates personal use cultivation. And for single-family dwellings, both indoor and outdoor cultivation is allowed unless the single-family dwelling is located within 600 feet of a park, library, school, daycare center or youth center, in which case only indoor is allowed. And for multifamily dwellings, meaning two or more units on a lot, so any duplex, any apartment building or so on, only indoor cultivation would be allowed. And for all cultivation, whether it's indoor or outdoor, there's a maximum, as I mentioned, of six plants per dwelling unit. The cultivation area has to be secured by a fence at least six feet high. The plants cannot be visible from any public right-of-way or private drive, meaning a street or sidewalk. That does not include private property, so if a plant is visible from, say, your neighbor's yard, that is not illegal. The outdoor plants cannot be higher than six feet and outdoor cultivation is not permitted in the front yard or within 10 feet of any property lines. So I'm going to turn it back over to Joe now and he's going to speak about the regulations for commercial cannabis. And just to distinguish what I was speaking about as personal use, this is the commercial industry.
So it is a lot of information that we're presenting today and we're doing it quickly. At the end of this presentation, we'll give you an email address. I promise it's real easy to remember. You can email us at that email address. If you want a copy of the PowerPoint, provide that information to you. If you have a question or concern, we also do intake on the email address. So Max talked a little bit about personal cultivation. I'm going to talk about commercial cultivation in LA County. So types of businesses and products. So I have a slide up here that shows you the types of businesses you might encounter if you are looking at the cannabis industry. You have cultivation, nursery, manufacturing, distribution, transportation, retail, those are your dispensaries and you have lab testing. So those are your basic license types. The state has, I want to say they have at least 15 different license types that are subcategories of each of these, but these are generally speaking what you will be looking at for the industry. Types of product, Max mentioned that adults age 21 and over can now possess one ounce of dried cannabis flower. Cannabis flower is simply the dried baggie of marijuana that you, you know, either, either have seen in your real life or see on TV. Constant, concentrated cannabis, this is, that's the third bullet. So this is less familiar to some. This is basically marijuana flower that has been processed in a way to extract THC in a concentrated form. So we have butane honey oil or BHO, which is, which is consumed despite that name. We have wax, we have hash. And then edibles, in terms of edibles, you've, you've probably seen these or familiar with them. You have candy, cookies, beverages, other consumables. You have topicals, which are lotions, salves, balms, oils, et cetera. So you have all different product types and with the legalization, you'll see, I'm sure, a diversification of the product types that you will encounter. So I just want to cover some of the current challenges without regulation. The primary one that most people are familiar with are unlicensed storefronts. So these are dispensaries that pop up in your neighborhood or in other people's neighborhoods that aren't licensed, aren't inspected, they don't have health and safety code compliance. These are basically illegal businesses and, and this is happening in Altadena, it's happening pretty much in every community that doesn't license these businesses. We have unlicensed cultivation and warehouse, commercial areas, open space. So this is actually happening usually in places where you can't tell it's happening, unmarked buildings, warehouses, et cetera, because storefronts need product and right now there's very limited licensed supply for that product. You have hidden commercial scale cultivation in a single-family home. This happens in every community. Someone will rent a larger house, they'll knock down a couple interior walls, they'll rerun some of the power and they'll essentially have a commercial scale cultivation facility inside a single-family residence when they're done. The house is wrecked, it's full of mold, leaving the landlord with a sizable bill. You have unlicensed commercial manufacturing and extraction facilities. Again, these are extraction, you know, either, it could be a commercial kitchen, you're making brownies. It could be extraction where you're actually taking the marijuana flower and turning it into a different product. You have dangerous home extraction, so this is the butane honey oil. And just to touch on this briefly, BHO, as it's called, essentially is made by bathing dried cannabis flower in butane, running it through a cylinder and it drips out the bottom in a sticky substance. The butane is volatile, so at room temperature, it turns to a gas from a liquid and it's heavier than, heavier than air, so it will hang out by the ground and any spark can detonate it. It could be static electricity from the carpet, it can be your fan turning on. People don't often know that the room is filling up with butane or they suspect it and they turn on the fan to empty out the room and they get a detonation. This actually happened not too long ago in Altadena as well, an explosion from a BHO in a residence. Pesticide contamination, so if you're looking at this from a health and safety perspective, in terms of protecting consumers, you are concerned and our public health department is concerned about pesticide contaminants. Right now, there is a major problem with pesticides. People are using them. There's no, you know, labeled pesticide for cannabis at this point, so it's an issue that turns up. And again, I mentioned no health and safety inspections, no fees are collected, no taxes are being paid. So why regulate? On February 7th, the board directed our office to coordinate with about a dozen other departments to prepare regulations for cannabis in LA County, both commercial and personal use. The major, the major concerns that the board had that they wanted regulations to address are listed here. Protect the public health and safety, protect the quality of life in unincorporated neighborhoods, you know, especially from dispensaries, overconcentration, overexposure, those kinds of issues. Eliminate illegal sales in storefronts. Eliminate do-it-yourself hazardous manufacturing and extraction. Prevent undue burdens on any one unincorporated community. Address some environmental issues and obviously the strong voter support was reasons for doing this as well. So the Board of Supervisors directed that regulations that we prepare must maximize the transition from the unlicensed marketplace to the legal marketplace. Right now, as Max went over, for 20 years, we've had essentially decriminalized medical cannabis. Now we have legal, non-medical cannabis and there is not a lot of legal licensed supply. So it's a largely unlicensed business. It's not that these are necessarily criminals who are trying to do this. Some of these are entrepreneurs, business people who want to be compliant, but there are no rules in place to help them do so. Avoid blight and prevent overconcentration. Again, this is primarily a problem with dispensaries if you have too many in one place. Protect youth from access and exposure. We want to make sure our youth consumption does not increase with legalization. Implement education campaigns for youth and parents. And there are about a dozen other items we have to address. The board's motion on this was very thoughtful, detailed, was nine pages long. So what would regulations address? So this is why we're here tonight. It's actually to tell you that next month, we'll be having community meetings throughout the county and we are trying to figure out what the community is concerned about, what you want to see in terms of regulations. And that's why a lot of these next bullet points I have have question marks at the end of the sentences because we have not figured these things out yet. Usually, we would go to the community with regulations drafted for reaction. We're doing it the other way around where we're taking actually feedback first and then we're going to develop, develop regulations based on that feedback. So in broad brushstrokes, there are three main questions. So it's where could cannabis businesses locate? How should they operate? How will licensing work? And there are countless other issues we have to address as well. In terms of locational requirements, so zoning is the primary thing we're looking at here and the board did give us direction on this. No outdoor commercial cultivation, indoor commercial cultivation, distribution and manufacturing in industrial and CM zones. All other commercial medical and non-medical enterprises in heavy commercial zones, C3 and higher. So essentially, those are dispensaries in C3 and up. Buffering, so again, these are the question marks. These are the issues we have to figure out. We want community feedback on these issues. How far must a cannabis business be from a school, daycare or youth center? So I put these three things on the slide because in Prop 64, these three things are identified as requiring a 600-foot buffer, but it says cities and counties can go higher and they can go lower. So this is really a default provision until a county or a city adds, you know, their own twist to this. Schools are K-12. Daycare is a licensed daycare facility and a youth center is, is also defined in the Health and Safety Code as well. Daycare facility also includes a preschool. So what other uses should be buffered? Parks, libraries, churches, I mean, these are things we would like to hear from the community on. Distancing, how far should a business be from another business? So if you have a business on one block, let's say a dispensary, how far over must the next dispensary be located? Operational requirements, so this is how a business will actually operate and it might be different for every business type. Hours of operation, signage, how do we mitigate odors from cultivation facilities in particular? For dispensaries, how do, how do we prevent loitering? How do we prevent public consumption near the businesses? I would add, I think Max mentioned it, that public consumption is illegal under Prop 64. How do we enforce that and make sure it doesn't happen near our retail outlets? How do we ensure businesses don't sell to kids? How do we protect kids generally with our operational requirements? Energy and water mitigation for cultivators, these are very energy-intensive uses. An indoor cultivation facility can use $30,000 of electricity a month. They are automated, they're very expensive, they're very high-tech. In terms of water, what we're seeing for indoor cultivation is that it's actually not that much water relative to another industrial use of a similar scale, but energy is the big one that we're considering and security measures for each of these businesses to reduce crime surrounding them. So licensing, this is basically, if you're going to get a license to operate, what do we want to see from an applicant? Insurance requirements, capitalization requirements, do you need a bank account? You know, background checks, what, what are disqualifying felonies? Do you need prior business experience? Some jurisdictions are requiring this. Do you need to have a plan for community engagement and reinvestment? Again, some jurisdictions are requiring this from their applicants. And we look at equity considerations in terms of ownership. You know, cannabis businesses, one of the statistics we've seen is that nationwide, they're owned about 1% by minority owners. So how do we address equity issues? That is a major issue in cannabis right now and was a major topic of Prop 64. So why is your feedback important? I think you, I don't think you need this slide, but basically the takeaway here is that if we don't get your feedback, you essentially haven't helped us in this process. So everything you tell us will be documented, will be reported back to the board so that they see what their communities are concerned about and they can pass regulations that are responsive to those concerns. And we'll say that, you know, generally speaking, cities that have done these types of outreach, done this type of outreach, a lot of the feedback has come from industry. Obviously, they're very engaged, they have a lot to gain, they have a lot to lose, so they will make their voices heard. What we're trying to do in LA County is make sure we have a balance of feedback. We want to hear from industry, but we want to hear from everybody else who has a concern as well. So there are several ways to participate. The first way is attend a community listening session and this is what I mentioned earlier in terms of coming out to the communities throughout the county. These listening sessions are, I expect within seven days, we should have a final calendar on these listening sessions. We're working with the board offices to finalize them as we speak. There will be 18 of them countywide. There will be four in the 5th district, including one in this area. And the listening sessions will be tabletop format. This issue is divisive, it's emotional, it's not a great issue for letting people get on the mic for three minutes and, and sort of get on their soapbox. We want people to sit around a table, talk about certain issues. We'll have facilitators there, we'll have translators to get information out of people who might not be comfortable speaking in front of a crowd and who might have different views than people across the table from them. Another way is to fill out a comment card today. Again, so if you can't make a meeting or if you, you're going to make a meeting, but you want to give us a comment today, when we're done here today, just hold up your comment, we'll pick it up and it'll be reported out as part of the process. You can also sign up today to receive emails from us. We have, at the back piano, we have a listserv. I might hand that out as we make our way out or you can go online and, and sign up there. And again, this is the email address, it's very easy to remember, cannabis@lacounty.gov. Marijuana@lacounty.gov also works. So, and if you have, if you want to go to our website, cannabis.lacounty.gov. So that's all we have. So thanks again to the town council and to Supervisor Barger's office for arranging this. So if there are any questions from the council, we're happy to address them now. Sorry to make you get up. I saw everyone leaving when Max was talking. Usually, that's what happens when I talk, but nice guy.
I've actually got a question for you. In the, I'm not miked. For the recording.
Okay, Councilmember Mason, go ahead.
So in the first section about personal cultivation, there was mention of dried flower and, and also concentrates, but there was no mention of fresh-cut plants and live plants in transport. Is there any regulation on those two?
So the, the, the limit of six plants and the limits on possession are not mutually exclusive, meaning you can have up to six plants and up to one ounce of dried cannabis or, and eight grams of concentrated cannabis. However, I don't actually know how the state law would treat if it's been harvested, but it's not yet dried. I'm not sure if you have.
Yeah, I believe the way state law works is that you're, you're entitled to grow six plants in your backyard. You don't, aren't necessarily required to grow them from a seed. You can buy them from a nursery. So if you're transporting live plants to your residence, for example, that is likely permissible under Prop 64. In terms of cult- In terms of commercial transportation of live plants, there will be a licensing type for distribution, and it will have to be part of what's called the track-and-tray system that tracks all the plants. Typically, you talk about harvesting, batching before transportation, but I would imagine some provisions will be made in regulation, state regulation for the transport of live plants, too. But it's a little tentative at this point, so we don't have an exact answer for you.
And nothing yet on seeds, seedlings, and saplings?
In terms of transport? I have nothing specific on that yet. No, we're still working very much with the state agencies on regulations that they will be putting forth, but I expect something will be in place to allow transport of seedlings. What limitations there will be, I don't know yet.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Sutherland.
Since I wasn't, since I wasn't near my pen when you gave it, if we want a power, the copy of the PowerPoint, is that?
Yeah, you can email cannabis@la县.gov to say, please, please give copy of Altadena PowerPoint. We'll send it right over.
Okay, Councilmember Habdi.
Is there a deadline, if you didn't mention, and a deadline when information or concerns from the community have to be given to you so they can be considered by the supervisor's office?
So that's an excellent question. We are, we are targeting end of the year for developing regulations, so this is, this summer, we'll be taking a lot of community feedback at the listening sessions, et cetera. There will be additional opportunities, for example, to review regulations as they're published and email comments in the traditional way. People will be able to testify at Planning Commission because there will be Planning Commission action needed. People will be able to testify at the board. So really, you're not limited in terms of when you can give comments. You can give it right up to the day of adoption or consideration by the board, but if you want your feedback to be considered when we're actually doing the drafting, I would recommend by the end of August to have something in to us so that, you know, really after the public listening sessions are over and concurrently, we're establishing an advisory working group with experts and stakeholders to develop recommendations for us, that process concludes in August. So once that's over, we're going to start putting pen to paper. So really, this summer is when we should, end of the summer is when we should have your comments. But of course, you're not limited, and we'll always be reactive to important comments.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Robertson.
Can I add to that? Once we have, when we have information to share, for example, the calendar of our community listening sessions, we've been to about a dozen town councils throughout the county and other community organizations. We will send the chair a copy of that information to distribute among the town councils so everybody's aware of what we're doing.
Councilmember Robertson.
So forgive me if I missed this in your presentation, but until the board adopts in regards to commercial applications of this, until the board adopts their local ordinance, is there something in state law today that regulates, you know, commercial production and whatnot to which our unincorporated community defaults at this time? And how, if so, what is that like in regards to storefront dispensaries right now until the board comes up with something local?
Okay, well, I'm glad you asked that question. Right now, the board has banned all commercial uses, so every commercial use from dispensary to manufacturing and to cultivation is prohibited. So if there is a business operating in an unincorporated county, it is operating in violation of that prohibition. So the idea is that when regulations are developed, the ban would be repealed with the adoption of regulations. So right now, there is a prohibition in place.
And in terms of enforcing that prohibition that's in place today, is that an issue for zoning enforcement? Is that county council? Who's enforcing that at this time? Do we call the Sheriff's Department?
So the answer is yes to all three of those. We have in place something called an MMDET, a Medical Marijuana Dispensary Enforcement Team. They don't just do medical marijuana dispensaries, they will enforce against any unlicensed business. That includes dispensaries, you know, manufacturer, cultivation, et cetera. If you want to report a business that's operating illegally, there are a number of ways to do that. You can call zoning enforcement, you can refer to the sheriff, you can email cannabis@la县.gov, and we'll make sure it gets to the right place. Our unit doesn't do enforcement. We have to, we're charged with developing regulations and that kind of thing, but we know who to contact if you have a concern.
Thank you.
Any further questions from the council? Okay, that should be it for us. Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you.
And if you send me the information, I'll pass it on to the council. Altadena, this will be item number 4.2, Altadena Filming Committee Annual Update, Councilmember Ann Coleman.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Okay, we recognize that Councilmember Coleman for the Altadena Filming Committee Annual Update.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Altadena Filming Committee has been in existence for a little bit over a year. It consists of four members, three members of the Town Council, Jennifer Lee, Pat Sutherland, and me, Ann Coleman, and one member of the community, Kenny Meyer. As we are approaching the end of the council year, the committee wanted to present a report summarizing its activities. We have prepared a report that's over 18 pages long, and I won't read it because I'm going to try to keep my presentation down to 10 minutes or less. So what I'd like to read is the executive summary of this report and the recommendations at the end of the report. The Altadena Filming Committee, a committee of the Altadena Town Council, reports on its activities over the past year. The committee's main goals have been to understand the sentiment of Altadena's residents toward location filming in their neighborhoods and to gather information about the county policies for film permit approval and enforcement. The committee has found that there is general support for filming, but many residents have complaints about some aspects of film shoots. The committee has talked with representatives from county agencies to determine what their policies were. In the course of these talks, the committee came to understand the filming permitting process and also what the permissions and restrictions in a typical filming permit are. The committee finds that a common complaint is that permit conditions are often violated by film crews. One permit condition in particular is routinely violated. Another complaint, one that affects neighbors in a very serious and negative way, is overuse of some locations. The committee identified a couple of root causes of the situations that lead to complaints. The first cause is a lack of accountability for enforcement of permit conditions. The committee believes that enforcement of permit conditions by Film LA and law enforcement personnel is made difficult by the lack of sufficient tools to enforce permits. Furthermore, it appears that law enforcement personnel working on film shoots do not have a clear understanding of what their duties are. The second fundamental issue responsible for complaints is a lack of transparency on the part of Film LA. In this report, the committee makes recommendations directed toward resolving many of the complaints that have been heard. The recommendations are aimed at improving enforcement of and therefore compliance with permit conditions, improving transparency of Film LA with regard to some permitting decisions, reducing the impact of extended film shoots, extended in hours or days, improving safety, and improving Film LA's relationship with the community of Altadena. So the, this report has several sections after this introduction. First, there's the introduction, then the achievements of the committee, then policies and procedures governing film permit approval and enforcement. This, this is about eight pages of the document, and it's, it represents everything that the Film Committee found out about policies that was not available online anywhere. It'd be very hard to get this information from the Film LA website or from the county website. So we've taken pains to lay it all out here in this document. There's also a section on the results of surveying the community, a section on root causes of filming-related issues, and then there's the recommendations, which I'd like to read now. And what I'm going to do is just read the first sentence of each recommendation. Some of the recommendations are only a sentence long, some go on a little bit to explain, but in the interest of time, I'll just try to go through these quickly. To provide better enforcement tools for permit violations, the committee suggests that penalties short of shutting down a shoot or revoking a permit be created. Such penalties may include fines or denial of permits for a period of time. The committee recommends that in the case of violations of the no cast and crew parking on area street conditions, streets condition, a fine be imposed on the production company for every cast and crew member found to be in violation. The committee recommends that all filming permits issued require an enforcement officer or a Film LA monitor to be present on location to see that permit conditions are complied with. In the category of duties of LA Sheriff's Department deputies and CHP officers, the committee recommends that for off-duty law enforcement officers that are hired by film production companies per permit requirements, a complete job description be written. In the category of overuse and transparency, the committee recommends that the appropriate county agencies specify the threshold at which a neighborhood becomes a frequently-used filmed area. The committee recommends that Film LA develop a countywide online database that makes it a simple matter for personnel to look up how often shoots have occurred at the requested location and on that block. The committee recommends that Film LA share upon request all the responses to pre-shoot surveys. The committee asks that the county CEO or council determine whether a home used so frequently for filming so that its rental becomes a primary source of income should be defined as a business and whether it is legal to conduct such a business in a residential area. The committee recommends that the county CEO publish its annual evaluation of Film LA's performance. In the category of long-term film shoots, the committee recommends that permit applications for shoots having a duration of longer than six days in a three-month period at one location be treated in a different way from permit applications for short-term shoots. In the category of late-night and all-night shoots, the committee recommends that writers to allow filming conditions such as late hours that would normally trigger a survey not be issued. In the category of Film LA Community Relations, the committee recommends that Film LA provide email permit notification for Altadena neighborhoods. The committee recommends that the county make public the process used to initiate and approve special filming conditions that would govern film shoots in a neighborhood. In the category of safety, the committee recommends that the Department of Public Works shall post no parking signs on both sides of cul-de-sac streets with the understanding that film vehicles may park on only one side. The committee recommends that Film LA require that generators be placed as far as possible from non-host homes and that their running time be minimized. And then the conclusion of this report is as follows. The Altadena Filming Committee has identified general support for location filming in Altadena. Film shoots become problematic when permit conditions are violated, when neighbors are not respected, and when too many shoots or shoot days occur in a neighborhood. The recommendations made by the committee have the aim of helping to resolve these issues so as to improve the experience of location filming for the neighbors of location hosts and to maintain a film-friendly environment. Mr. Chair, the committee, I make a motion on the, on behalf of the committee to send this report to Supervisor Barker and copy the county CEO and the president of Film LA.
Is there a second? Okay, thank you for the presentation. You did give all the council members a copy of it, so we've had the opportunity to go over it. There is a motion on the table and is properly seconded. Council, what would you like to do? You ready for your vote? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposing? Okay, so a copy of that will be sent to the supervisor and Fibley and the other group. And thank you so much for all that work that you put with the Altadena Filming Committee.
Thank you.
Are we going to post it on the website?
Yes, we will also have it posted on the Town Council website. All right, moving on to 4.3, the Allen Substation, this will be Southern California Edison, Mr. Dave Ford.
Thank you so much. It's a real pleasure to be here this evening. My name's Dave Ford. I work in our Public Affairs Department for Southern California Edison. I have some additional colleagues who are here with me tonight that have some questions concerning the construction of this project. We'll be able to share in-depth questions, answers to some of the questions that you might have. This project, I've worked in this area for last several years, probably going back to when Mrs. Thomas was on the Altadena Town Council, and the project is quite an extensive project. We've got circuits here that are old as me, 1957, and some of the circuits that we got equipment, switch gears that need upgrade to meet the grid of the future, better reliability, better service. I have a presentation I want to provide to the council members that pretty much goes over the scope of the project. The Allen Substation project is elimination of that substation that will include roughly around eight circuit upgrades from a 4KV circuit up to a 16KV circuit. The Allen Substation is located on Pepper and Allen, north of Washington, here in Altadena. The circuits that we'll be upgrading when we eliminate the Allen will be coming out of the Eaton Substation, which is on Sierra Madre in Washington. This includes a replacement of around 270 poles, 567 transformers, and automation of switches that will allow us to be more responsive during faults on our circuitry and be able to enhance restoration times and when customers might be out of power for various events that could be animals, car hit pole, lightning, trees, and other forms of activities. The cost of this project is an investment that we see is much needed. It's roughly around $37 million in total for the project. And again, as I was saying, is to replace old and obsolete equipment. Some of this equipment that we have at the substation is very difficult to find manufacturers who make this equipment anymore. It takes time to rebuild equipment once it fails and try to search for parts that are no longer manufactured anymore. We have included in your presentation a scope of the mapping of each one of those circuits that will be, that will be doing the upgrade on. They're colored, colored on the presentation, and as you're following along, I believe that's on page five. So what can you basically expect out of this project? You're going to have some outages, several outages throughout the course of this project. We will do everything possible to provide early notices for this project with emails, door hangers, texts, as well as mailers that will go out to customers. We just recently sent out, I believe it was 12,000, 15,000 Dear Neighbor letters to those customers that are impacted by this outage, that informed them of the work that we're doing and the, sorry. The work that we're doing and the length of time that we'll be in the area to finish the project. Again, I realize that this has been, you know, it's uncomfortable, challenging at times for many customers, and we're going to be as sensitive as we can to, you know, try to meet the needs of the community, but we know that this work is long overdue. I know in 2011, when- I know in 2011, windstorm, the restoration times to get folks back up power was challenging. You've had some circuits that have had numerous amounts of outages that are being impacted over a period of time. And customers have come up to me, they've contacted Supervisor Antonovich's office at the time, and now they're contacting Supervisor Barger's office. And, you know, we want to work together. We realize how important this work is, needs to be done to provide you the quality type of product that we provide, but we also want to know how we can do it better and make your experience much more smoother. I don't have any questions or we, I know, let me share this as well. We realize that this weather is heat that we're in right now can be quite challenging and uncomfortable, and particularly if a maintenance outage is occurring. So we're looking at these outages as a case-by-case basis, and we, if necessary, we will make some decisions to cancel outages as on a case-by-case basis. We want to make sure that we get this work done because if we do have unplanned outages, it takes much more time to do, get parts and repairmen to the site and plan to do work for restoration. So a planned outage makes it much more easier. We're able to control the work site a little bit better and get folks back on in a much reasonable amount of time. I don't have any other input to provide unless my colleagues, if I miss something in this presentation, you know, you're welcome to come up and join me here at the podium. But again, we appreciate the support that we have gotten in the past from this community. We'll continue to work with you and partner with you, and please feel free to contact us. And, you know, we feel that this is a much-needed investment in the community and the constituents of this, of Altadena.
Okay, there are several questions. I do have one, and I guess I call it a comment. In the past, Mr. Ford, the town council have always received someone from Edison come to us before something takes place. And it seems that this time around, the outages had already occurred, and now we're coming behind the ball. I hope that in the future that something like this can be taken care of so that maybe the community can let you know what they anticipate. There was one resident that sent a letter to me and apparently deposed that are being replaced, are huge, two, three times larger than what it used to be, and some of them are impacting driveways in this particular instance. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. I haven't responded yet, but it's something that I will be responding to that particular resident. So I will turn it over to Councilmember Lanson.
Hi, thanks. So according to this, the works going, are started in May and is going through January. In the eastern part of the census tract that I represent, there's been quite a bit of work going on for the last several months related to the electricity, and I've had some concerns from the residents in that area that the notifications that they're getting about outages are not always accurate. It says there'll be a planned outage and then the outage doesn't happen, or an outage does happen and there has been inconsistent notification. Is this, is this part of the same project? And whether it is or isn't part of the same project, does Edison have a plan to deal with the notification issues? I see, this is a really good one that, one of the slides that talks about the different ways you can choose to get notified from, by SCE and the different methods that they'll do it. That's very helpful, and I don't think, we just got our note, our letter yesterday at my house, and I don't think that this was included in that, I can't say that for sure, but it is pretty helpful, and that would be something that I think would help the neighborhoods if that could get distributed in a more, in a broader fashion.
Okay, if you don't mind, I'm going to defer that question to my colleague Maria, and she can, you know, tell you who she is and what department she works in, but she actually works in outage communication.
Hi, good evening, everybody. My name is Maria Godino, and I'm a member of the outage communications team. So to answer your question on the outage notifications, when we put an outage into the system by mandate of the CPUC, we actually do mailers, so you would always receive a mailer for information. As of 2016, I'm sorry, 2015, all customers, residential customers are able to opt-in to receive automated notification. The timeframe of receiving an automated notification versus waiting for a mailer is about three to four days' time. So I really highly suggest residents that are not registered to receive automated notifications to receive them. As the example of the slide that you're referring to, those are the emails, texts. You have an option to receive either mobile or landline notifications as well. That's not eliminating the mailer, that's an addition to the mailer as well.
Okay, and I'm sorry, my question was really long.
It's okay.
So there's a couple of parts. So the work that was happening earlier, is that part of this same project, or is this a different, or was that a different project?
So for the beginning of the year, I can't, I don't have the information in front of me, so I don't know exactly what work you're talking about, but this specific project actually started in May, and it's going to go through the duration of the year. So chances are that we do have pole replacements projects as well that are happening, so it could be part of that other project.
But I think this touches your census tract as well, and it was, it's been, what, four months now?
Oh, that it's been ongoing, people losing, yeah, people getting notified. It may be the pole replacement thing, but it's all in our minds, part of the same thing.
Correct.
The same way that when you say to us that it's a third-party vendor that's out there doing all of this and doing the communication, I don't really care. You hired them, you're my supplier.
Correct.
And so you need to be responsible for those people, right, that are out in our neighborhoods? Anyway, sorry, I'm getting a little bit on the soap opera. Go ahead, yes, our area has had a lot of work in it.
Yeah. An additional comment to your notification, as you stated, whether the work happens, it gets rescheduled or if it gets canceled. In those type of scenarios, we don't have enough time if an outage gets canceled either last minute or reschedule as well. We don't have that option to do the mailers because you won't receive the notification, it will be way over the outage. So when customers do opt-in to receive automated notifications, those customers will receive notifications through the duration of that particular outage.
And is there a way for you to call home phone numbers?
Yes, there is. You're able to opt-in. And customers are able to opt-in via their My Accounts.
Is there a number that they could call?
Yes, so the letters that went out, as well as, oh, we could provide you a number if you call the call center, the call center rep is able to do that as well.
Is that 24 hours, is that?
Actually, it's no longer 24 hours. I believe it's from, I want to say 7 to 6 p.m. I'll get the hours correct, and I'll provide that information, correct.
There is a 1-800 number that you can call, which is to report any type of outage or, you know, street light outage or electricity is 1-800-611, 1-800-611-1911. We also can provide a copy of this presentation to the town council.
Yeah.
And provide information on how to access the outage center, which is another tool that we have, that you can actually access that from your computer or your cellphone. You can download.
Unless you have an outage.
Yeah. Download it on your droid.
Not from your computer. If you have an outage.
Yeah, I understand, yeah, that's true. That is true.
But for seniors who maybe don't have either a text or if they're a number they can just call, maybe they haven't had a chance to opt-in, but is there a number, because you mentioned just for outages, that they can contact to find out and get an update whether there will be an outage that day?
Yes, that's correct. As well as if you want to just get automated confirmation, if you have an outage number, they're able to call that 800 number that Dave just provided, option number three. And if they put the outage alert number, they would confirm, it would tell you if it's confirmed, canceled, or rescheduled.
So it's pound three on that one?
Correct.
There's a number here that's 800.
That's the call center number. And I need to provide you the hours to that.
Okay, okay, okay. The only thing really quickly on this is that I've heard now people talking about your, and in the windstorm, we had the same problem, where you're replacing poles, you leave the old pole because cable and telephone and all that is on, you know, AT&amp;T, whoever uses the pole as well as you guys do, and you get them to come out and move the, move their facilities onto the new pole, right? We've had discussion in, on social media about them not knowing why the old pole is still there, you know, still there. So if you're, I guess if your vendors are leaving a pole, it would be nice, or if you want to put it in here or something that says if there's another pole, we'll take care of it ultimately.
Yeah, and that's absolutely true because when we remove our services off of the old pole and put it onto the new pole, the transferring in that, we leave the telecom or cable services attached to the old pole, and it's, that old pole is cut from the top or the bottom, and then the transfer is made later by those servicing telecom or cable companies. Now, we've got a process in place that we're being much more robust, because in the past, I know that that has been an issue. And we're working very closely with these other companies to help manage that process. You know, part of the action after the windstorm was to go and do a pole assessment, and that pole assessment created, actually a huge project within our company that we're going through our entire service territory and replacing poles that are deteriorated and ensuring that, you know, safety and reliability is number one priority to us.
Okay, I know there are other people that would like to ask questions, but there's a couple of things that I really see here. Edison has a major project that is happening in our community. The project that you have happening in our community not only impacts the residents that will be suffering from the power outage, there is also impact on traffic unrelated to that particular section that you're working on. So Altadena, the way that I see it, we should have been informed, there are other ways that we can reach out. So the community outreach is, for this particular time is, for lack of a better word, is poor, and we like something a little bit better. And I, we are not sure what you're doing with the other, the telephone poles and things like that in terms of co-locating. Is this something that is going to come back to at a later time to be moved onto your pole? So you all should do better, and we're expecting better from Edison in terms of the service that they provide to Altadena so that the disruption will be less impactful to the community. That's really where I'm going. So again, I'm going to turn it over to, let me start with Councilmember John White.
Yes, Dave, thank you for coming out. The last time we spoke was at the meeting with the Brayburn residents. So my question specifically is about that area. See on your map, you have a number of areas identified. Which, what is the order of improvements according to this map and has there been some sort of priority established as to which areas are served first?
Yes, I'd like to call one of my colleagues, Robert, to come up and provide some insight on that, but Brayburn is one of the projects that we're doing upgrades on. I shared that with you during the meeting that we had last, earlier this year.
Good evening. My name is Bob Robinson. I am the Program Director for Henkels McCoy, who is the third-party construction firm doing the work. It is a huge project, and basically, as Dave mentioned, there's eight circuits that are involved out of Allen Sub. And of that, we are basically setting up a schedule where it'll be, as you saw on your map, we've worked on the nursery, which is the northeast portion of Altadena. We've worked on the maiden, which is the northwest portion of it, and then the lake, which is right off of Lake Avenue. The sequence of what's going on is how the 16KV circuit is basically set up and how we go about cutting over those sections so that we can minimize the impact of the outage, the length of time, and the number of customers that are going to be affected by it. So as we finish up on the nursery, the maiden, and the lake, which are almost complete, we have, the Brayburn is next, this is what we're going to start on here shortly, and then after the Brayburn, we're going to do the Tenoble, and you can follow along on the map, and it kind of identifies where we're at. After the Tenoble, we kind of, the way the circuitry again is set up, you'll see it's kind of bounced around a little bit, and it's because of the way the primary voltage is and how we're going to tie into those circuits. The next one is the Belford. After the Belford, we go back to the Tenoble, the Brayburn, like I said, just the way the circuitry is laid out, and then we finish up with the New York and the Passaic line. And that would complete the entire cutover for the Allen Sub, which is going to be put in mothballs and be decommissioned, and then basically everything will be fed out of Eaton Sub, which is over by Eaton Golf Course right off of Sierra Madre.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilmember, Councilmember Robertson?
Two quick things. One, could you clarify the location of the Allen Substation?
It's actually on Belford, and it's north of Washington, east of Allen.
It's on the west of Southern.
Yeah, and then it's basically west of Pepper. It's kind of like right over there off of, it's off of Belford.
It's a really old, cool building.
Yeah.
Yeah. Are you getting rid of that building, or are you going to keep?
I'm not sure what they're doing with the actual sub. There'll be no more service out of that substation.
We'd probably like to find out what you're doing with that building.
Okay, you still have a follow-up question?
Yeah, one more. For the outreach team, when you guys do send out these Dear Neighbor letters, are they going to the service address or are they going to the property owner's address, which is not always the same?
It's going to the service address of impact, so we're not using the mailing address. Whoever's at the location that it's going to impact, that's who's receiving the letter.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Councilmember De La Torre, and then you're next.
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. I actually represent the southwest portion of Altadena, so east, no, sorry, west of Fair Oaks and bordering Pasadena towards the south, but I actually had a couple of my constituents receive this letter, and they were confused as to whether they were going to have outages as well, so can you clarify that?
So the reason why we actually send the letter, the Dear Neighbor letter, to some customers in Pasadena, because they're actually fed for those circuits that are going to be impacted. So we also wanted to inform them of the work that's going to be done.
So presumably, people who receive these Dear Neighbor letters could be impacted?
If not necessarily impacted by an outage, but there will be impact in some way, shape, or form in regards to the project, correct?
Okay.
Councilmember Coleman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This question is for Maria and the outreach. So what I gather from the neighborhood listserv is that some of the people who get multiple notifications, like they're signed up for, I guess they get door hangers and email notifications, they get conflicting notifications. One will tell them that outage is going to be this day, and another notification will say outages are that day. So what do you recommend in that case? That they, can they get the straight story by calling your 800 number or the?
Yes, they could definitely call our 800 number as well as, like I said, the 800 number with option number three. Those notifications actually have what we call an OAN, which is an outage alert number, and if they input those six-digit, the six-digit number, it'll be able to tell them when the actual date and time, and if it's scheduled or canceled or rescheduled. So it's pretty much, it's automated versus them having to either use the computer on sce.com/outrage as well, they'll be able to do that as well.
So my other question is, why are there so many cancellations? Is it because, I think I heard one explanation once, was that something, an outage would be scheduled and then it'll be canceled at the last minute because there was some emergency somewhere else that had to be attended to? And if that's the case, I wonder why you don't give, I mean, I understand emergencies are important. are important, but maybe there should be more people hired so that you can really give priority to, you know, doing things when you say you're going to do things in a neighborhood that's undergoing a lot of, a lot of inconvenience.
So our first, our first responders, who are our only personnel at Edison, who are able to de-energize a circuit, it's actually a troubleman, and they're also our first responders in the event of an emergency. So if we have a troubleman, we have a 911 call, and the troubleman's on his way to de-energize for maintenance work, we will pull the closest troubleman to take care of the 911 call. Yes, I do understand that, you know, the, the need for the troublemen are, are, is big, however, you know, we're, with the resources that we have, that's currently what it is. It's more of a trade, a special trade, that we run into the, the personnel issues at times.
Okay, Councilmember Malone?
Hi, I'm just looking for some information regarding of contacts, not, not to do with the outages, but to do with the work itself. Some of the complaints that I hear and see, and it's especially on social media, is that Edison will come, and they won't give notification that they're coming onto your property to do work. They leave the gates open, people have pets in the back, they come home, the gate's left, been left open, somebody came home to their front yard being used as a staging station and wasn't aware of this. When they called in, the response was, well, it's one of our contractors, it's not us. And like Diane was mentioning, the contractor does work for Edison, so what I would like is to know, to have some kind of contact information, who can somebody call to get the correct information? And the reason why I say this, because sometimes the work goes, like it's happened with our businesses, Edison will show up, and it will impact for days, and the person won't know, or the business won't know. So who can they contact to get the correct information?
Well, my name's Eric Oates, I'm the Regional Construction Manager for Southern California Edison. All customers have the opportunity to call our call center and specify what's transpiring to receive an answer. What I'll do is contact our project general supervisors that cover the area, and they will follow up with that customer to explain what's going on and/or to alleviate the issue.
Okay, because in some cases, it's been the subcontractors, and I noticed here it says you're using subcontractors for this particular project, and the, some of the complaints is the condition, the yards have been left and so forth and so on, so it's just the general contact information, huh?
That's already up, in fact.
Yeah, yeah.
And obviously, the type of work that's being performed with poles, equipment, and so forth, can cause some inconvenience to the property, meaning the grass is dented or so forth, but usually those, if you report those incidents to us, the contractors have also their ability to come out, assess the situation, and rectify it. They'll mitigate the situation after the fact.
Okay. In, in my questioning, it seems to be that it's the contractors that's causing the issue, so it would be kind of pointless to send the contractor to go out to see it. It would be, who in Edison can we get a hold of to make sure that it's taken care of? That the contractors are doing their job for you?
Well, I have to say, the contractors are very responsive when we call them.
Okay.
Back, I'll talk to Bob Robinson directly, and say, hey, we have an issue out at this location that we would like some information on. We validate who was out there, we validate the situation that is at hand, as well as photos that can be presented and so forth, and everyone's very, and, and again, if they're not responsive to that situation, then again, call the call center, or have them call the call center, and we'll follow up on it. We'll have a Edison personnel go out and actually look at the location.
So maybe, maybe they can, maybe you guys can give us, we can get it out there, everybody, like what information are trying to give the call center? Because I've called, I do technology for call centers, I've called the call center there, and it's not always, the person you're talking to doesn't always understand exactly what you're, you know, you have an outage, let me put down your outage. No, it's the big project. So is there verbiage that we can give the people to, when they do call the call center, to, to tell the agents really what you're talking about? You're not just talking about that your electricity went out?
So if you, whoever's going to be calling the call center, the Dear Neighbor Letter actually has an 800 number, which is again our call center, and if you have the residents reference this Dear Neighbor Letter that they received, and the call center will send me directly that information, and I could work with Eric and our contractor, a contracting crews, so that they'll be able to further mitigate with the residents. But if, again, if you contact the call center, and that customer lets them know, we need the resident to identify the Dear Neighbor Letter, because all customers are tagged of receiving it, then they'll send me their, directly that information, because call center has my information.
Well, you're saying that their address, their, their address will be tagged if they got a Dear Neighbor Letter?
Correct.
So they don't have to have that in their hand?
No, they don't. As long as they reference it, we already have a note on their account, so they already know to send all complaints to me in regards to a Dear Neighbor Letter.
I, I also like Eric's comment about documenting it. So if there's a particular issue to do with your property and so forth and so on, a picture speaks a thousand words. So if it's documented, then you can understand what the problem is, right? It's a lot harder over the phone.
Yeah, because you're talking about going on to the property, in some cases, the contractor's working on the public right-of-way, but the customer considers that their property. But really, it's the public right-of-way, and Edison, our contractors, our partners, will move forward with the work, and potentially without any notification to the customer, because in many cases, working in that right-of-way will not affect their power. So they're not going to receive an outage, they're not going to receive a heads-up notification, because they may be even outside of their property, but they're in proximity, so they think they should be notified.
But if you have documentation, you can answer that question, that it's on this particular pop, area, or maybe that person wasn't in the job, and we can, we can service a complaint accordingly. Okay.
Correct. And I would encourage, when you're speaking to the constituents within Altadena, that you encourage them to provide their address, name and phone number, a good, as much a good a description as you can provide as to what the issue is, whether it's damage, what type of damage, or that it's an outage, or what type of outage. Are they experiencing full outage, or is it part lights, which may not even be related to the, the circumstance of the construction that's going on? That helps out quite a bit. As much a full description as you can provide.
Okay, and we just need to make sure, when you call Edison, and you have this big list of things you want, you know, do you want this, do you want billing, do you want whatever it is, right? If you're calling about a power outage, then what you do is you ask for the, you have your home phone number, you ask for the, your, your street, the number of your house, and you get into a, an automated loop of, we're going to, yeah, you know, okay, we'll take this down and we'll get back to you. So I guess, we can talk to you offline about, I know we don't need to take all this time, but I think we need to be able to tell people, or you need to tell people in your letter, what to push to get to a person.
Right.
Chairman?
Diane, what I'd like to do is, for the council, I would like, if possible, a hotline for the council, so that if we get complaints, just like two or three that I already have, I don't want to be on the phone on hold or trying to be bounced around. There has to be someone that we can reach directly to be able to resolve that, if possible.
I was, I was thinking in terms of possibly, if, if someone from this council could be assigned to work with us on this project, and we could provide updates ongoing, they could filter, we could filter information or complaints that, you know, and then they then can provide updates to the council throughout the course of this project. Because I, I, I think for me to, for us to be here, and it's June, and this project's going to be ongoing for this year, I, I feel much more comfortable if we have an intentional engagement, that as we're moving along this project, if there are some things that we think we, that you suggest that we do better, that that person or, or people, part of the council could share with us. I, I, I want to improve and look at ways that we can do, complete this project, and, 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 you know, get folks' lives back to normal. So I, I'd really like to do that, if we all possible. I will dedicate my time to, to, to helping support that engagement, and I'm, I'm sure the rest of my colleagues will, will support me as well. This is a, this is a big project for this community, but the end result has huge benefits, long-term benefits. I, you know, I, I, it'll, these benefits go past my lifespan, and, but I, I'm just glad to see it's being done. I just want it to be, you know, I, I understand your pain and your concern, and, you know, we'll, we can work with you on, on posting information on your website, and work through your own social media gates to keep updates and information, so your constituents and customers are, are informed.
Okay, what, in the interest of time, I don't know if there, there are any further questions from council. If not, then we can move on, but we can talk after the meeting, because we have a couple more presentations, so any further? Okay, if, if you don't mind, I know it's a long evening, we can talk, kind of iron things out. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Anybody in the audience?
Oh, yes, yes, this is very important, I'm sorry. Is there anyone from the audience specifically impacted by what is going on?
Well, they're going to go out there, that's what I was saying, was that go out in the lobby, and these guys can go out there and they can ask their question.
Okay, but on the other hand, I know, I wasn't sure if anybody directly impacted was in the audience.
Yes, we're, my neighbor's in that, you know, so we can ask.
Could, could we?
Absolutely. I, I think that would be the best way.
Yeah.
Okay, they, they will speak to you directly. Okay, moving on to the next item, and that is 4.4, Department of Public Works, Mr. Vis Kara.
No, that's not, that's not a Dell. That's Dell's over there.
It does.
That's who we...
Hi, good evening. My name is Jim Daly. I'm with the Department of Public Works. I'm in our Road Maintenance Division, and I'm here to talk a little bit about the work we're doing on New York Drive, and also about the future proposed work on New York Drive. I had a nice PowerPoint, but we had some technical difficulties, so what I will do is I'll hand out the PowerPoint here. It's pretty simple, there's not a lot of information. I also have a couple handouts here I can give to people. I'll pass those out real quick. So I, I just want to briefly talk about the work we're doing right now first, the, the patching and kind of paving work we're doing. I know there were a lot of concerns, especially after the rains this year, that New York Drive was really getting into pretty bad shape. So, yeah, and getting worse, and in fact, my, my staff was out there on a weekly basis patching potholes, and kind of taking them away from other work that would benefit the community. So we went ahead and decided to do a little more significant repairs. We've been doing a lot of grinding and patching back in certain locations, and we're, we've got about two weeks left of that work. I think they're, they're, they started at Lake, they're over towards Roosevelt, and they should finish up near Altadena shortly. We did this as a temporary measure, because the long-term project, which is currently in design, is not scheduled to start construction until January of 2019. So it takes quite a while to do an effort like that. The project, as we have in here, the, the scope of that project is going to be reconstructing or resurfacing the roadway from Lake to Altadena. We're going to remove and replace all the existing guardrail, construct new ADA curb ramps where necessary, new curb and gutter pretty much throughout the whole reach. We're going to do new sidewalk to fill in the locations where we have gaps. We're not putting sidewalk on the both north and south side of the street, we're only filling in gaps so that we have sidewalk on at least one side of the street throughout the entire reach. We will also be doing, reconstructing some damaged sidewalk, we're going to be doing some new cross gutters in locations where we don't have catch basins to take the water across the street, the intersections. We're going to do some traffic signal upgrades at where the existing signals are at, and we're also doing some storm drain improvements in a couple locations where there have been significant complaints in the past. As I said, the, the plans for that are currently underway. We expect to complete the 50% design plan some, in November of this year. At that point, we will schedule a community meeting to come out and discuss the design plans. I don't have all the details on that right now, so that's not something I'm going to get into, but that, there will be a time for the community to have input on the design before they go forward with finishing the plans. And then, the plans should be complete sometime in May of next year. Go back to the board to advertise those plans for contractors around July. They'll put, then send out some community notices after the plans have been advertised. Contractor will come on board, and then the construction will start sometime in January of 2019, approximately. That schedule can change, this is very preliminary as we're working on the design plans, but they should come back with more information. And that's kind of the brief presentation I have, if you have any questions.
Okay, several questions. Let me start from my left. Start again with Councilmember White.
Yes, Jim, thank you for coming out. You mentioned that there would be crosswalks covering the entire length, but not entirely on one side or the other.
I, no, I, we're going to do-
Not crosswalks, I mean sidewalks.
Sidewalks.
And my, my concern is, will there be crosswalks to transition from one side of the street to the other?
There will be crosswalks at locations, and there'll be more detail on that with the plans when they come back for the community meeting. Yes, crosswalks are proposed in certain locations to get people back and forth across. Most of those will happen at the intersections, I don't know if they're the signalized ones or not, but that is part of the plan.
And will there, or maybe it's too early to ask this, but are bike lanes going to be part of the plan?
I believe they're considering a class-two bike lane, and so how they're going to, you know, signage, I'm trying to remember the class-two, I don't do a lot of the bike lane work, but where they can stripe it, they will, where they can't, they'll sign and maybe do sharing, but I, I know the intent is to try and provide bike lanes wherever possible. And so there are some sections that the road will be widened, but there is a lot of sections where they took that part out of the plan, because it would take out too many mature trees. So they're trying to work within, you know, the structure of what they have right now to eliminate the removal of trees. As proposed, from what I saw, there's only two or three palm trees are proposing to remove at this time, and hopefully we'll be able to plant some more trees as well. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, go ahead. Councilmember Sanique.
My question is, and, and thank you for your presentation. My question is, once the streets are, I guess, re-repaired, or you, I'm just looking at on the side of the road, maybe you're replacing some pipe or something like that, and then they cut the, the street up, and then they replace the cement in the street, but sometimes it'll be bumpy and uneven. Is there, I mean, once you finish those projects, is there, are you required to, to smooth the road out and, and slurry so that it looks neat and complete?
So typically with a project like this, it's a full reconstruction for the most of the way. We have a moratorium on any utility cuts, except in rare cases where they really have to get their, get in there and do something, and then if they do, we ha, we have them do a little more work than you see on some other projects where the street's been repaved maybe 10 years ago, and all they do is repave the trench. So in something like that, we will work with all the utilities ahead of time to relocate and do any work they need to, so they don't have to come back and do that work, and then we'll put a moratorium on it. For the lighter pavement, it's normally two years, this will probably be more like five years, we basically tell them you can't come in, and if you have to come in, you're doing a significant patch back to make it look much better than it normally would.
Do you have a, a regular schedule where, of smoothing and slurring the roads, so that they look, you know, a lot of times when you guys finish the work, it looks worse than, than, you know, it was looking before you started? worse than, than, you know, it was looking before you started.
Yeah, on New York Drive, you know, the, the patchwork we're doing now is, um, it may not be aesthetically pleasing, um, and going back and slurring the whole thing would probably make it look better, maybe a smoother ride, but we don't really have the funds for doing a lot of that work right now, we do have a pavement preservation program, and hopefully with the funds that have been provided through the new gas tax with Senate Bill One, we're gonna be doing more of that work, um, and that's proposed, so, you know, as we go on, if that funding stays as it is proposed right now, we'll be in good shape, and we'll, you'll see more pavement preservation work out there.
Okay, uh, a couple more people here. Yeah, all right, uh, Councilmember Nestor.
Um, yeah, I just had actually, a basic question, what's the difference between, well, obviously in terms of scope of work, I know, but why is it that you're doing the, the patchwork right now currently on New York Drive, like, what's the purpose of that? And then, the, this future project in like, two years or so?
Okay, so the patchwork was just, there are certain locations where we were going out almost every week to patch potholes because the pavement just kept popping out, and it was so alligatored, no matter what we did, it, you know, we'd be back the next week in another location right nearby, so, we're going out and trying to get the worst locations, grind it out, put some asphalt back, so at least it'll stay intact until the, the new work is proposed, the new work is basically taking it almost down to the, mainly down to the base, and redoing everything, in some locations down to the dirt, and redoing all the base, so, um, that is a significant project, that's also gonna include the curb and gutters, sidewalk, and redoing everything, it's, it's from right away to right away almost, doing work, th- this is just to eliminate all the times we're out there patching potholes, all the potholes that get developed, um, and, you know, people having, you know, it's a bumpy ride, but it's not a ride where you're gonna have your tire go in and hit a hole all the time, so that's what we're trying to prevent, just make it, uh, a little bit safer and keep us from having to be out there all the time.
Thank you.
Councilmember Coleman.
So, um, I actually spoke with you earlier today about a resident, uh, who lives near, on Alta Wood, and complained that a water company had tore, had dug into the street and did a bad repair when they covered the street back up, so can you go back and make that, uh, utility company, um, do a better, better, uh, repair of the street?
Uh, I actually did drive that location before coming here, as I told you I would, um, and from my point of view and looking at the road, they did a very good job in patching it back, it's, um, it's a smooth ride, they patched back all to the edge, there's no roughness, uh, aesthetically, it's not pleasing, you've got a dark line with the kinda lighter gray pavement, um, the only thing, at some point you could slurry it to make it look the same, but really, they, they did a good job, it was, it meets and exceeds most of our expectations.
Thanks, if they had done a bad job, can you do something about it?
We would, we would go back and have them redo the, the patch, yes.
Councilmember Markison.
Yeah, hi, um, so, I think what I heard you saying, which is, I think what we will all be listening for, is that, um, there will be a time, I don't have my, the, the list in front of me, but November maybe, where you'll have a time when people can come talk to you about their own property, is that right? I mean, that there'll be a point in time in this process where, if they're worried about, or you're gonna ha- give us something where we'll be able to see, here's the sidewalk that will be changed, here's the, you know, you're, I think you're not gonna change the river rock, um, gully, or whatever we call that, that goes down New York Drive on the north side, um, where we'll, we'll be able to see, right, all the details of what you're planning on doing at some point.
Yes, the, the 50% design plans will have a lot more detail, um, I, I know with the, the drainage on the north side, that river rock, the, the only work they're looking to do there is protect everything in place and redo all the guardrail and the attachments, so I, I don't, there's really not, they're not going to touch the driveways that come over it, they're not gonna look at redoing the channel, just kinda repairing and upgrading the guardrail to current standards.
Okay, okay, thanks, thank you.
Okay, any further questions from the council? Okay, uh, just final point, you indicated that the moment that you have some information, you'll come back to the community, I had made a note for myself here that says, uh, I should request a separate public forum, uh, to allow our community to interact and input in terms of, uh, the upgrades, uh, in terms of the big projects, so, and you are saying that at some point you'll notify also that the community can be engaged?
Yes, the project manager, um, I talked to him earlier today, and they are proposing to set, to prepare and set up a community meeting sometime at the end of the year or beginning of next year when they have enough information, I think it's, uh, yeah, I said, December 2008, January 2018 is about when they're looking to do it, they haven't set that up, but they'll work with, um, the town council to arrange that.
Okay, no further questions, um, I, I can't see the person in the back, um... Okay, sorry about that, I didn't have my glasses today, sorry about that. Okay, yes?
So, um, so we've had the, the patching going on now, and, and you, um, given us the handout of, uh, this new project that we're starting, how is that new project interfacing with the Devil's Gate Dam to Eden Wash project that is also going to be tearing up New York Drive from Lake Avenue over to Eden Wash? How are you interfacing with that project? Because that means that three times the street is being impacted.
At this point, we're going forward with the road construction project on its own, the, the pipeline would be a different issue, right, I'm not here to speak on that or talk about it, we have plans for the road construction, and we're moving forward.
Are you in communication with the people in charge of the Devil's Gate Dam to Eden Wash project?
Yeah, we're, we're of the pri- and we've talked to them, um, but that, that's a separate concern at this point, we received the funding to go forward with this project, and the road's in such a bad shape, we're gonna move forward.
Okay, thank you so much, all right, uh... Okay, thank you, uh, Mr. Daly, I thought, I was told that it was going to be Mr. Viscarra to present, so, next one is, uh, committee reports, and, uh, let's start with, uh, Land Use Committee, Councilmember Markison.
The, the land use meeting for June was canceled, so we, I have no report.
Thank you. Election Committee, Councilmember Sutherland.
Okay. Before I, I give you the, um, the council, the, uh, numbers, um, from the, um, election, so that we can then certify the election, um, I'd just like to say something about it, um, first, I'd like to thank all of the volunteers that helped during, um, our election period, um, who helped to make what I think was a successful election, and yes, it was a measure of success, even though the vote count was not as large as we would have liked it to, to have been, um, I would like to thank the election committee, um, which was made up of myself, of, with, um, Allison Amagacha, Nestor De La Torre, and Jennifer Lee, um, all of these people worked extremely hard, not only with certain specific duties, but on election days, all of them spent a lot of extra time filling in for, um, uh, volunteers at the polling places, and I want to make sure that I thank them for doing that extra, um, bit of duty, um, I'd like to thank certain of the council members who, uh, gave us over and beyond just, you know, one time sitting at a, um, a polling table, uh, that would have been certainly Councilmember, um, Judy Matthews, and, uh, Councilmember Ann Coleman, um, and we had a couple of community members that did exactly the same thing, when there was a need, they stepped up and, um, filled in for, um, some people that weren't there. Lastly, I'd like to thank the members of the community that came out and actually participated in, in this particular process, we, the election committee had, um, we had a goal to get as much community participation as possible, and we were faced with two major challenges for this election, one, we have two census tracts that did not have a candidate this time, and number two, by the time of the candidate forum, just a few days before the election, um, there were candidate withdrawals with leftist, with, um, six, um, positions that were not being contested, um, that is a challenge because we were asked time and time again, "At election booths, why should I come and vote if there's, you know, nobody, nobody challenging any of these people?", and, um, what we really felt was that the more, uh, interest we could get in people actually coming out to vote, um, the more interest we could get from the community in general, for the council in general, and the work that we do going forward, um, I tried to find out by going back through records to see if we'd ever had, uh, an election with these two things that happened at the same time, where we were missing, uh, candidates, and we also had a number, all of the, um, positions were uncontested, it could have happened before, I couldn't find any, so this seemed to be a very unusual, um, kind of a thing, a number of the candidates actually got out there, they knocked on doors, they handed out flyers, they got people to come that had not voted before, I know this because I was at most of the polling places at one time or another, and we were told by many people that they had not voted before, so we are hoping that, um, the votes that we got, the people that actually put their little checkmarks on the piece of paper, um, that's actually a participation in the process, and hopefully these people will come to meetings, which would be very nice, we would like to know what they think, we want to know their opinions, um, we'd like to know what else we can do as a council for them, so, we're gonna think very positively that we've at least attracted a number of people that had not voted before, and that is very encouraging. Um, the actual numbers for the, um, election, um, for the, um, Altadena Town Council election 2017, on Tuesday, June 6th, and Sat- oh, and Judy, I have a copy of this to, uh, put, attached to the minutes, so that you don't have to make notes on all of it, um, on Tuesday, June 6th, and Saturday, June 10th, the Altadena Town Council held its 2017 elections, on June 6th, votes were cast at the Altadena Main Library, on June the 10th, votes were cast at five locations around Altadena, the Altadena Main Library, Avison School, Hoopla, Gordy's Garage, and, uh, Techian Cultural Center, the results are as follows, number of votes cast, 261, census tract 4601, there was no candidate, 4602, Billy Malone received 46 votes, um, tract 4603.01, Dorothy Wong received 77 votes, 460302, Dr. Sandra Thomas, 20 votes, 4610, Veronica Jones, 49 votes, 4611, Justin Robertson, 51 votes, 4612, no candidate, and 4613, Sylvia Vegas, 16 votes, of these votes, two were considered disqualified, and it was determined that those votes would not have affected the outcome of the election, there have been no challenges or candidate disqualifications, um, are there any questions from the council members on, on these? Then I would move that we, um, accept this as certification of the election.
Okay, uh, motion properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Should incumbents be abstaining on this vote?
I'm sorry?
No.
No, correct.
All right, um, all in favor?
Aye.
And in your position? Okay, unanimous? Thank you so much, and next one?
And the, the next piece I have, um, the two open seats that we have, which were for, um, uh, census tracts 4601 and 4612, um, starting, if not tomorrow, by the next day, we will have up on the, um, council website, the instructions for, um, those people in those two census tracts that would like to apply as, uh, candidates, um, what we will do, I don't have my, my date here, I'm sorry, um, will be, we will be accepting applications to... Well, if I had the right year, then I would be... There we go, through the, um, 14th of July, and then we will, um, provide the names of those candidates at the, uh, Town Council meeting on July the 18th.
Okay.
Any questions?
Sure, just, uh, an addition, go ahead.
If a, uh, potential candidate is here tonight, may they submit their, um, information?
Well, the only trouble is, the, it's not up on the count, on the website yet.
Will you accept hard copies?
If, let me answer that question, uh, what we will do is, the information, the package will be available, and, um, uh, when can we have it available?
It'll probably be up tomorrow, that's the...
Okay, the, the package, the package will be available tomorrow, and they can, uh, pick it up, uh, download it, uh, and, uh, submit it back to here, uh, before, uh, or by the four, is it the 14th? The 14th of July?
Does, does this package differ from the one that was?
One of the documents is just slightly different, that's all, so we want to make sure that at least we've got, you know, the correct thing signed, it's one of those, one of the things you have to sign, that'll be just a little bit different, and dates are different, and that sort of thing, so...
Yeah, we're, we're not quite ready, okay, thank you so much for that report, and I would like to use this opportunity to thank, uh, Councilmember Sutherland, uh, she really did an excellent job, so, thank you so much.
The new council members, um, will be installed at the, um, July Town Council meeting.
Uh, community reports, Altadena Community Reports, uh, the Public Library, okay, Mindy is not here, oh, oh, okay, no, LA County Department of Parks and Recs, and that's Melissa Hernandez.
A trooper!
Trooper, trooper.
Trooper.
It's summertime.
Hi there, yes, it's summer, so it was, must I be here, my, my name is Melissa Hernandez, um, thank you, council members, for having me, um, I am the District Manager for LA County Parks and Recreation, so I manage the Altadena Parks, um, I just want to talk about fun, fun, fun stuff, and it's short, and I'm gonna leave some flyers in the back, but we're gonna talk about Parks After Dark is going on now, yay, get your flyer in the back, this means on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday nights, you can go to Loma Alta Park for all kinds of activities, and I have this beautiful brochure available to you in the back, um, it's also on our website, of all the activities we're doing at Loma Alta Park, um, just a great example is we had a Juneteenth celebration on Friday, um, last week, which was really awesome, this Thursday, we'll be having a, um, resource fair, so a community resource fair of all kinds of aid that's available to people. Wonderful, yeah, ballet will be performing, um, they're just cute little things, we have the Natural History, uh, Mobile Museum coming to the park, and that's, this is all free of charge, um, then on Friday night is gonna be Youth Night, where we have bouncers available for everybody, tons of bouncers available, and fun houses, um, and then we're gonna have, um, on Saturday, we're, at Charles White, we're gonna have the Lego Batman movie, um, free, so bring out your chair and blankets, sun, as the sun goes down, we put on the movie, um, bring the whole family, this is all free, it's get people out of the house, come to the parks, enjoy the evening air, and meet your neighbors, so, um, you can go on our website at lacounty.gov, I mean, parks.lacounty.gov, um, and you can get all of this information of Parks After Dark, I have flyers in the back also available, or you can call the park directly at 626-398-5451. Lastly, I have, um, it's coming up next month, and it's a month later than usual, but, uh, Mr. Silveira wanted me to talk to you about it, and that is the annual picnic at our community garden that we have, it is an awesome event, and if you've never been to the Altadena Community Garden, I invite you all to go and visit it, I've been with the county 20-plus years, and I've seen a lot of community gardens, this one is the absolute best, I guarantee you, it is well-run, it is beautiful, and the residents that have the plots there just keep a beautiful garden, so to show off everything they've grown in the year, um, July 29th... So to show off everything they've grown in the year, July 29th, from 12 to 5, they will have a community picnic. Tickets are $10. You can go on their website, or you can pick up a flyer in the back, or call the park for information, and come out and have a picnic with us and the gardeners on July 29th. That is all I have.
Any questions for Melissa?
You can have those.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And 6.3, Chamber of Commerce, council member Malone.
Again, I'll keep this brief because of the long agenda. Just note there with the chamber, it's the end of the year, it's starting July the 1st, we're doing a member drive for the next year, so we're in the process of that, if you know anyone with a new business. We're increasing memberships, doing really well right now, a lot of outreach, a lot of things happening. As I mentioned before, we're starting a new directory. There hasn't been a directory in print form for many years. For the first one, it seemed, it was sort of stopped as it went to the social media, but there seems to be a need for another print directory. Unfortunately in Altadena, because a lot of our businesses are hidden, we can't capture everyone on the first print. So if you see it, the directory comes out, if you want to take an ad out in it, you can go ahead and do that, but if you see it the moment, it's only going to be members of the chamber, but there will be a page in the first print where you can fill it out, if you know anyone with a business, you don't have to be a member to be in the directory, but we've got to collect those names as many as possible. So the first print, if you know anyone with a business, wants to be in the directory, member or no member, fill it out when it comes out, get a copy, and send it back to us.
Thank you so much. 6.4, Collaborate Pasadena, council member Sanica.
Okay, and I'm going to keep my presentation short and within the timeframe. Our meeting of the Collaborate Pasadena Leadership Council was held on June the 6th at the Flint Ridge Retreat Center. The director gave us an overview, a program overview, and there was some discussion on why participating in the Leadership Council is important to us and how, and how we interact differently in the community as a result of this importance. The director reported that the part-time position, she was an assistant to the director position, had been filled, and that we will have an opportunity to meet the candidate at our next meeting. It was also reported that our request for funding from the Los Angeles County Supervisor's Office was approved and we were awarded $10,000 to further the initiatives of the Collaborate Pasadena. Brian Berry and Kim Kenny gave workshop reports. The director has planned an annual retreat that will take place sometime in September, and the meeting was adjourned, oh no, we set, we set priorities for the following month and then the meeting was adjourned about 7:30 PM. And I look forward to next month's meeting.
Thank you so much, and moving on to 6.5, and that will be 41st Assembly Local Government Advisory Committee, and that will be council member Matthews.
Okay, thank you. The California Legislative Black Caucus, Juneteenth Celebration, the Freedmen's Bureau History Event will be on Monday, June 26th at 3:00 PM in Sacramento, California, at the historic State Capitol Building. The Freedmen's Bureau was established to help transition from slavery to citizenship for the first time in U.S. history, and the names of those individuals were systematically recorded, preserved, and put on the internet for future generations. The event will help demonstrate the advantage of creating a satellite for family history research outlet outside of the Smithsonian Institute. For example, they are proposing a computer donation to the California African-American Museum CAM in Los Angeles, dedicated specifically for family research. It is also being proposed that, that the database will be, be shared and with volunteers to help at CAM as trainers and docents of the Freedmen's Bureau records for as long as the museum needs to train their own librarians in this effort. The goal is to set up a family history mini library and other venues similar to the same type of research system that we find at the Smithsonian Institute. Participant is to lead the California Legislative Black Caucus, Assembly Member Chris Holden, guest speaker is former Congresswoman Diane Watson, and yours truly Judy Matthews will be speaking on behalf of the National Congress of Black Women. Sponsoring organizations are the Legislative Black Caucus, Family Research International, National Congress of Black Women, Family Research, African-American Museum CAM, and the Smithsonian National Museum of African-American History and Culture. I will be attending on, on Monday and part of the event.
Thank you so much, I think we wind it down here. Any question for council member Matthews on that report? All right, census tract report 4601.
So there was a, there was a concrete repair project targeting a large part of census tract 4601, in which the department, so all the neighborhoods in Altadena are going to have concrete repair, but this was the first area that was targeted. And so what happened is, where inspectors went around and looked at curbs to determine which ones needed repair, and if there was a tree nearby, they assessed, an arborist came and assessed whether that tree would be endangered by the concrete repair. And so as a result, many trees were targeted to be taken out because of the target, because of the concrete repair. And so then what happened was, many residents protested, they called the contact, their contact Carl Peterson at Department of Public Works and said, "We don't want the tree taken out, we'll live with the bad curb and save our trees," because there were, a lot of these were matured trees. And so what the county did is back off of this project for a while, and I wanted to thank Jim Daly, who has left, because he, after there were several discussions, a lot of protests and several discussions with residents, they agreed to not take out many of these matured trees and instead do an asphalt patch of the curb. And then Jim Daly reached out to everybody who had contacted that department and Carl Peterson, and he wrote a really nice letter saying that they had been kind of rushed to do this project and they were going to back off now, and the concrete work and any tree removals have been put on hold until we have more discussions with the community. Our next steps will include additional outreach to the community before we move forward with the concrete repair project. This outreach will discuss possible impacts including access, parking, tree removal, and tree, tree planting. So I, I'm sure the residents really appreciate this attitude, and that's why I spoke with him today, and I asked him, you know, whether the, what's the, what's the latest on this? And I think they're going to start moving again in July, but they're going to do it slowly and talking to the residents and, and, you know, asking for feedback and actually talking to every homeowner who's, who has a home near a tree that's targeted for removal.
Thank you so much. All right, moving on to census tract 460301.
This would be really brief. I think all of us are experiences, are experiencing, if we haven't, some of the homeless living in trailers, vehicles, you're experiencing that, right? And I was able to contact the county, there was a situation in census tract 460301 in which this particular person was just driving in different areas of the street, parking his, his vehicle with family. I spoke to the neighbors because they were concerned, to let them know, these individuals are not criminals, they're homeless, and we must respect the fact of, they don't have a home. So I found out there's called Safe Parking Program for Families, and this program, you would have to contact HOPICS, it's acronyms for HOPICS, I believe, and there's a number that you, they would have to call, and they would have to be interviewed in order to be able to either stay in some type of housing or be able to stay in their cars, but there is a place in Los Angeles where homeless can stay in their cars. So when I get more information, I'll share it with you.
Thank you so much, 460302.
I just have two areas of concern that I want to share with you. Last month, I, I attended the, the performance at Elliott Middle, Elliott Middle School for the, actually I've been working with the principal to try to get a reading program there, and they had a, a performance of High School Musical, which was very good, it was very well-attended. I don't have a detailed report for you today because me and the principal haven't met. Right after the performance, they were getting ready to close school, you know, so we decided we were, we selected a date, and for some reason I was thinking that our town council meeting was on the 21st, but it's tonight, the 20th, and our meeting won't be until tomorrow morning. So next month, I'll have more of a detailed report to share with you. But I, I did attend the first night and there was over 250 people there, and the children gave a wonderful performance, you know, something that I think everybody would have appreciated. And the next thing I'd like to just announce, that census tract 4603.02 will be having its spring cleanup, and this will be on June 24th from 8:00 to 12:00 noon. We will meet in the parking lot of the Bob Lucas Library, and the flyer says, "Bring your rakes, your brooms, your trash bags, and exercise your civic pride," but we are going to be working with Athens Trash, who's going to provide us with trash bags. Public Works will be providing us with hard hats, jackets, and rakes and brooms, so you can still bring yours if you want to. The motivation behind this community cleanup is basically the concerns that I was receiving from residents in my community, or in my census tract, stating that they felt that our community was suffering from blight conditions, overgrown weeds, people dumping trash everywhere in the community. So there are some things that we have control over. You know, you can, you can live in a messy neighborhood, or you can live in a clean neighborhood. It's up to you. You don't have to wait for somebody to come to your neighborhood or your community and do those types of things for you. So we have this cleanup day, we do have support from Senator Anthony Portantino's office, they're going to be providing us with water, the Boy Scouts of America are going to support us, and also Tecumseh Shuckford's Youth Development Program will be supporting us. So we have support out there, and I'm, I'm extending an invitation to all those in census tract 4603.02 who have concern, because you have an opportunity to make change in the community. You don't have to wait for someone else to do it for you, to change the condition and the look, because they're saying blight, okay? So I'm, I'm hoping that people will come, and we're starting early because it's starting to get hot now, okay? So I will be there at 7:30, Public Works and Athens will be there at 7:30, and we'll have everything set up, and we're going to tackle the hotspots on Altadena Drive from Ventura, well, actually from, on Lincoln, from Ventura to Altadena Drive, and then we're going to also tackle the alley that's over on Fair Oaks and Ventura. It will be June the 24th, that's this coming Saturday, from 8:00 AM until 12:00. Thank you.
Thank you so much, the final census tract will be 46, that'll be you, right? Okay, there you go.
The bonds on Allen and Washington isn't passing up, however, council member Markson and myself have been receiving a lot of emails concerned about the bonds closing. Reached out to the general manager, Tom Lapatka, today, and the lease has been renewed until the beginning of 2018. The community rallied and sent a lot of emails to corporate, they're trying to negotiate beyond the 2018 renewal. I have an email address I'm going to provide for continued support, and that would be slikeincat90@safeway.com, and all those emails will be sent to corporate. So just want to let the community know that bonds will, lease will be there until the beginning of 2018, and they are negotiating for longer, they've been there for 41 years.
Okay. I thought they said it was a year. Okay, never mind.
Are you going to talk about, tell the council members about the executive elections?
Oh, yeah. Is it now?
Well, it's going to happen next meeting.
Okay, do I pick up the... Just give us one second. I don't like to announce it. Wonderful, sorry about that, we had to kind of confer for a second here. I like to use this opportunity to also advise the council that for the Altadena Town Council Executive Committee, I would like to appoint Ann Coleman to chair the slate committee, and I believe that it was Jennifer that will be joining you. Do you have any interest in doing that as well?
Yes, I believe we're supposed to be meeting at 8:30 Thursday.
Okay, perfect. So there are three individuals that will be on the slate committee, and council member Coleman is going to chair that, all right?
So if any of us do not want to be on the executive committee, we can just email you guys, and is that, would be okay?
Sure.
If we just email you, email you and say...
Don't look at me.
Yeah, don't look at me. Take me off your list, okay, that's fine, just wanted to make sure we could do that.
Okay, am I missing anything else? It's been a long evening. Okay, council member?
The E to, E to the Beat Pasadena Friendship CDC Summer Music Fest and Food Truck Dining, fundraiser to benefit our affordable housing program in Pasadena and Altadena. This is the group that does the annual Altadena cleanup for the various homes in our area, especially those related to seniors and out risk, at-risk families. So it's open to the public, free admission, 50/50 drawings and door prizes, and that's on Friday, July 21st, from 5:00 to 8:00 PM, and they will have the food trucks and it's going to be really nice. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Public comments, I have a comment card from Dawn, is it, how do you pronounce Mello? I'm not sure if he's still here. Dawn? Okay, it is Potholes on, on Street on Wapelo. So I'm aware of this and I will be, I will be working on this to have it resolved. Okay, so we are done, I would like to entertain a motion for adjournment?
Second.
No, a motion?
So moved.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay, thank you so much, the time is 9:40, and I thank you council members for your patience and...
Don't forget to comment.
Okay, thank you so much, midnight adjourn.